And somebody asked me if it was a five in the morning or five at night, and I said, "I believe night," I said, "but I'd prefer in the morning." It'd be fine with me. It's light at either time. It's like living in Alaska. But it's a little warmer. You don't think this is going to happen?
They're going to table it.
Before or after? She said that's going to be tabled. Is it going to happen before or after?
Smile on mine.
Thank you, sir.
I know. When it comes time to talk. Oh, and when it comes time to discuss it. No, we're not going to do that.
Thank you.
Oh, are they all gone? Uh-oh, somebody didn't get their last page. Yep, I'll have to go print some more off.
The Redo Noon at the State Council of June 13th, 2017 is now called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Minister Jim McConnell from the Varian Unitarian Universal Fellowship.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, friends. Let us, as you wish, close your eyes and still your bodies and minds in the attitude of quiet meditation. Spirit of life come unto us now so that we might find within ourselves the virtues we need to form the paths that are set before us tonight. Let us find within ourselves a clarity of vision that has at its goal justice and equality for all. Let us find within ourselves the will to govern without ego for the good of all people and for our planet with its manifold light forms. Let us find within ourselves a discernment for the ethical. Let us find within ourselves a spirit of tolerance for views that are not our own. Let us find within ourselves the willingness to compromise, when compromise is necessary for the common good. Let us find within ourselves a sacred anger against institutions and systems that marginalize the poor and disenfranchise the weak. Let us find within ourselves a respect for the inherent worth and dignity of all people. And finally, and most importantly, let us find within ourselves that great love that is the root and foundation of all life. Amen.
Amen.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Next on the agenda are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate Raphael Morton to the City of South Bend Economic Development Commission.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Raphael Morton is nominated to the City of South Bend Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our May 9th, 2017 meeting? Do I hear a second on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from May 9th, 2017 are approved. Report from the county auditor?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, first readings. Clerk, will you please read bill number 4417?
In order to amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at 13328 McKinley Highway from B Business District to C Commercial District, petitioners LJR Realty LLC.
Bill number 4417 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Ordnance, uh, bill number 4517. In ordinance, amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at 15001 Patterson from our single-family district to C Commercial District, petitioners Donald DeShepper.
Bill number 45-17 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill 4617, in ordinance approving the petition for special use filed by the property located at 12601 Shively Road, the same being petition number 06-07-17-14 filed with the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, petitioner Simon Stalter.
Bill number 4617 is also assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, public hearing, public comment. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our May 23rd, 2017 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed for the evening. Clerk, will you please read bill number 4117?
In ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of Sancho County Government.
May I have a motion on 4117?
Second.
There is a motion to pass bill number 4117 made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by... Mr. McAhill? Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing that, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzaray?
Yes.
Mr. McAhill?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 4117 is passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill under land use, bill number 2917?
In ordinance approving the petition for special use filed by Blueberry Ranch LLC for the property located at 54499 Buckeye Road, Osceola, Indiana, 46561, the same being petition number 05-03-17-19.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
President, bill number 2917 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Page?
I am page 11, a business service administrator with the building department at 125 Lafayette Suite 100. This special use application for a dwelling unit intended for temporary occupancy by farm labor in an A agriculture district comes to be made available recommendations from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals. This use will complement petitioners' adjacent 75 acres of property. There is also a variance from the required 20 acres to 10.43, which was approved by the ABZAA, subject to the approval of this special use by the council. There were persons at the ACZ meeting that spoke in remonstrance of the application. I won't go into detail about what they said, except to say that the findings of fact issued along with the ABZAA recommendation more specifically address the state and federal regulations that will probably, that will address a lot of the issues of the neighbors that spoke in opposition to the application that was proposed. There's also a question in the committee meeting regarding the possibility of renting out the facility, and if they are renting it out for anything other than temporary farm labor usage, they, that should not be allowed. If you have any other questions, you can tell me, I can answer them.
Any questions in council or the building department? Thank you. Petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. President and board members. My name is Johnny Nelson. I live at 12240 Carlton Drive, Milwaukee, Indiana. I am the sole member of Blueberry Ranch LLC. In the meantime, I'll skip the history of the Blueberry Ranch, and I'll skip down the... Blueberry Ranch is a labor-intensive crop, culturally grow and to harvest. Our local labor supply is unable to supply our needs as indicated by our, our low unemployment rate and plethora of health-winded signs. Thus, we have turned to United States government labor program called H2A. H2A applicants go through three federal government agencies for approval: the Department of Labor, Department of Homeland Security, and the Department of State. The company needs to demonstrate they are not displacing any locally United States labor to qualify for this program. Blueberry Ranch LLC has gone into that program. We posted, we, we used a service. Item one in the thing is a workforce development posting, job statewide. Number two is, we had, we had to post it nationally. On both of those, we had no response. On the next, next handout, it should, I guess it doesn't matter. Anyway, there was, uh, there was one in there about, uh, job posting on H2A for corn, corn labor. Maybe other, anyway. We currently employ two H2A workers that are responsible for much of the cultural work on the farm. Their work visas extend for six months, March 1st to April 30th. We also need professional hand-harvest labor during the harvest season, which typically lasts four weeks. Unfortunately, the number of professional hand-harvest laborers in the United States is shrinking at an alarming rate. H2A workers are now filling that gap. In 2011, there were 77,000 H2A workers. By 2016, there was 166,000. All our workers, from the kids down the street to the professional hand-harvest labor, are required to fill out I-9 form proving that they are authorized to work in the United States. There's an I-9 in your packet. I want to point out on page one of the I-9, number four, an alien authorized to work until expiration date. We do have these type of, we do have the, um, what people would call the green card and now pink card. The people that use these cards or have these cards that are authorized to work in the United States, it has an expiration. If they get in any trouble whatsoever, those cards can be revoked and also not, not renewed. So our labor force is all qualified. Pay as well as safe and decent housing attracts the best employees, and that is why I'm requesting a special use permit for labor housing. Our labor housing will have air conditioning and Wi-Fi. Following attachments illustrate proposed housing at 54499 Buckeye Road. First one, just kind of overview of where it's at. Second one's a little tighter view. The big X on, uh, number six, the big Xs are the existing farm. You can see how we're, we're just adjacent to it. Number seven is the building location on the property. It'll be in the southeast corner of the 10 acres. Number eight is the exterior of the building that we were hoping to build. Number nine's the floor plan. Ten, eleven, or twelve are interior views. Thirteen through seventeen are regulations. You can see how highly regulated this is. There was a question the other day in the committee, fire, fire safety, I forget who had the question, but on page, my page 16, you can see that, uh, there's, that's all addressed in the regulations. Housing for H2A is highly regulated. Besides being approved at the local level, plans must be approved by the Indiana State, Indiana Department of Health, and the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, and will undergo yearly inspections by the Indiana Department of Labor. We intend to install fencing along Buckeye Road with lockable gate at the east end. Northern white cedars will line the fence in another row of trees, north-south, to make another stream. That's, I threw that in there for you, in case you don't know what, uh, white cedars, there's a picture of a truck with white cedars, that's how tall they get. Through a copy of the bill, we already started the process. I have a vested interest in the neighborhood and not stand for anything that would jeopardize it. I take, the Blueberry Ranch takes pride in our ethical work practices. We do everything legally and value a good relationship with our neighbors. I have owned and managed the Blueberry Ranch for 41 years and have lived and raised my two daughters on this property. I believe my neighbors can testify on my behalf that I've been a great neighbor. The last page is, uh, the neighbor closest to the south. We have hired countless neighbor kids over the last four decades. The Blueberry Ranch is many, many of these kids' first job. We have plowed our neighbors' drives of snow, done our equipment for mowing and garden tilling, and have allowed at least five neighbors to dump leaves on our property in the fall. For many years, we cooperated with the Sancho County Road Department, who dumped leaves on our property when they had the leaf pickup program. In fact, we wore out two mulch wagons spreading leaves during that period. I have seen real estate listings for houses that bought of the farm, use that as a selling point. We have a long history of being a good neighbor, and we will continue to be a good neighbor. The Blueberry Ranch continues to, contributes to a positive quality of life in our immediate area and the entire Michiana community. The opportunity for residents to pick fruit with their families is rare. The opportunity to pick organic blueberries with their families is even rarer. Families travel miles to come here to pick or buy blueberries, and many are third-generation customers. It is imperative that we secure the right labor to be able to offer this opportunity. The last thing I want to do is shut the farm down for lack of labor, but sadly, that is what would happen if I don't secure labor. I would like to continue to offer organic blueberries to the community. The work here is short and intense, and is difficult, more difficult to fill these jobs. Decent housing on the premises will help secure the desperately needed labor. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council for the petition of Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. Sir, you indicated that many of the workers have visas with specific deadlines or termination dates, is that right?
The H2A is a, as they define, they, correct.
So what happens at the end of the date?
They go back. We have, we provide a, we provide transportation up here and back, a bus ticket.
So you actually monitor return of the workers back to their home countries?
Yeah. We have to give them a bus ticket.
Any other questions from council? Uh, I have a question for the building department. Just a point of clarification. Uh, Ms. Page, did you, did I understand you to say that most of the remonstrance, those questions were answered through the federal and state regulations?
Yes, I believe that there is some concern about the types of people that might be using, might be hired there, and I think that the regulations petitioner has outlined would help or alleviate those concerns.
Okay, I guess my, my real concern is, are the remonstrators, have they been made aware that their concerns will be addressed, or, you know, that type of thing?
At the Indiana meeting, when they did speak, I believe the petitioner also, like, petitioner had the opportunity to speak, um, to rebut their arguments, and you mentioned those federal and state regulations as well. So I'm not sure if the remonstrators are here tonight for the public hearing or not, but they have more questions, they can certainly answer them or ask them.
Well, I mean, even if they're not here, I think they need to be made aware...
They're here.
Pardon?
They're here.
Oh, okay. All right, just making sure. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? Hearing done, I'll open the public hearing on 2917. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello. My name is Linda Stockman, and this is my husband, Lambert Stockman, and we live to the north of the 10 acres where, um, John Nelson wants to build the migrant housing. We are totally against it. We moved there in the country in 1995. We own 26, a little over 26 acres. We have a beautiful home that we have our life savings in, I think over $500,000. And we moved down the road out of a subdivision at that time to live in the country where we had one neighbor to the south of us and none across the street from us. And, um, we're opposed to this because we think it'll be interest to us, and we think our land value will, of course, go down to sell our property. We feel, um, very uncomfortable living next to five, uh, 15 migrants for, I guess it's six months. And we have trouble understanding what they would be doing during their off time. They have no commitment to the, uh, community, or to the property, or to the, uh, town, or to the United States, because they're simply coming here to get money to go back and, and... I, I, you know, we're just, we're just in total opposition. John Nelson owns another 80 acres, and we feel that he needs the migrants, maybe he could put it somewhere, you know, in the middle of the property or something, where it wouldn't be so visible. I mean, I, you know, you're welcome to come to our street, we have a beautiful home, and this was going to be our neighbor. So, um, I don't know, but whether you're for a new president or against him, I, I thought the idea was to get workers from the USA to, uh, keep the jobs in the United States, and maybe if they were paid more, they would come to work there. I know we've lived in the area all our life, and, uh, I know many, many people that worked at the blueberries, you know, from the street we live on, and we used to live in Granger from that area too, and, and, um, I know it's kind of a short-term thing, but we just feel it would be in real jeopardy to our, our value of our property. And we've always paid our taxes, upkeep our property, we're good citizens, we've done everything right. I didn't ever visualize that we would live next to a migrant housing. So we just think it'll adversely affect us and our safety and our property value. So we'd like you to consider that, maybe see how you'd feel to have that as your neighbor and come and go, and I'm just particularly worried about my safety, you know, even to sleep there. I told my husband, I, I just wouldn't feel very secure. I know there's another house next to that, and I think they have a family living there, a couple with a child, but it seems to be like four vehicles there. I, I don't know if more people are living there, because I don't think two adults would have that many vehicles.
Three minutes passed.
That's one house farther on his land. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of bill 2917? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Uh, petitioner has three minutes to rebut any of the comments that you just heard, sir.
The, uh, correct number for six months would be currently two. The rest of them would be two, two H2A workers. I only use two H2A workers for six months, as it says in here. The rest is hand-harvest labor, four weeks. And property values, I, I actually talked to Mr. Stockman before, uh, I don't know, about four or five months ago, and said if he was ever ready to sell, I'd be more than happy to, um, make a loan. So property values, to me, is not, not a issue. That's all I have next.
Petition's all right? Mr. Nelson? Can you be a little more explicit? I know you were in a committee meeting, so I mishandled. So two of the H2A workers would be utilized for six months?
Correct.
In the housing you're proposing? And then the hand-harvest labor? How many of those employees would it be?
Well, the building would hold, the building holds, the proposed building holds 15.
15. You have those, the, the bulk of those there just for a four-week period?
That's hand har, that's, yeah, the, the blueberries are ripe basically, July. We'll pick, we'll start shortly after July. And the two, the two H2A workers denied would be...
Is the proposed, um, location of that facility that you're proposing to build, is that on the property line? You said, no, it's in the middle of property, right?
No, it's on, it's on the, it's on Buckeye Road. It's on, it's on, it's right, uh, it's right on Buckeye Road.
So close to the, close to the roadway?
Close to the roadway.
As the Stockmans have talked about, is it, does it, about their property closely?
No, if you look at the, well, it's close.
Well, I mean, it's on, what I, what Mrs. Stockman described to me about...
It's not adjacent, I mean, it's across the field, it's...
Okay.
It's... Take me just a second.
I'm trying to get a better handle of where your building placement's going to be in respect to what their concerns are.
Okay, if you look, can you look at number five? My handwritten five.
Yep, I got five, okay.
See the, see where it said, see the A, the water, it looks like a pond?
Yep.
Go up, that's their garage, and then go up, and that's their house.
Right.
Okay, now, if you move up to the top A, that's Buckeye Road?
Right.
Go right. Okay?
Right.
See where that?
The X?
Other building is, yeah, that, that was torn down, that was burnt down. It'll be slightly to the south of that.
So further south on that X on that?
Correct. It'll be as close to that corner as legally, legally...
To the south edge of property line?
Correct.
As legally as it can be, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Nelson, what, what was the reference to, you have another 80 acres? Do you have another 80 acres?
No, that's the same, that's the same acres, there's...
Well, I understood you needed some type of variance because you only have 10 acres. Did I misunderstand?
No, it, okay, go back to, go back to the handout. And the one with the Xs?
Right.
All right, number six. Well, number five, if you, if you leap back, see where the R is? That's a blueberry field. See that? You can, that's the road. And then if you look at the Xs, that, that constitutes, I think there's, there's two there's just short of 90 acres total that I own that are contiguous.
Okay, I got you. So you've got two different parcels, one's a little over 10 acres, you've got the 80 acre parcel.
Right.
Thank you.
Sir, so two workers are there for six months?
Yeah, we have culture there, we have to prune. Right now, we're a lot of weed acres because we're organic.
And the other 14 are only there for one month?
Four to five weeks, when the berries are ripe and ready to be picked.
And is this the same protocol each year? Is this the same, how it works?
Well, this is the first year I've done H2A, because we just flat out ran out of work, ran out of labor.
Don't understand that, I'm saying as far as...
Yeah, the blueberries are only, the blueberries are ripe, you know...
So, it's safe to say it'll be basically the same or close to...
Yeah, the blueberries aren't going to be ripe over 10 weeks or 12 weeks. They're always going to be ripe.
And I'm saying the number of workers.
Well, it's, it's a maximum on that house. You can only, all of the regulations state a maximum four per square feet and all that. So, the most, that's a maximum.
That's what I'm trying to get to, okay.
Right, that's a maximum, that's correct.
All right. Any other questions from council at this time for the petitioner? Hearing now may have a motion on 2917. Mr. Nolan.
Question, is this, Mr. Root?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add or?
Any other questions or comments from council at this time? Hearing now may have a motion on 2917.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 2917 was made by Councilman Cahill. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from council at this time? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 2917 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 30-17?
In order to amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 23990 Fillmore Road, South Bend, Indiana, from C Commercial District to our Single Family District. The petitioners Eugene and Betty Williams.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please.
Mr. President, Bill number 30-17 comes for full counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Big Stanton with the Area Plan Commission, looking forward to this building. The petitioners are requesting a zone change from C Commercial District to our Single Family District. On the site is a single-family dwelling and several accessory structures. To the south, across Fillmore Road, are single-family homes, zone our Single Family District. To the east, are single-family homes, zone our Single Family District. To the south, are single-family homes, zone our Single Family District. And to the west, across Oak, are single-family homes, zone our Single Family District. There's no site plan that's required when rezoning to our Single Family District. Some history on property, in 1987, the site was rezoned from our Single Family District to C Commercial to allow for activities associated with a motorcycle class. So, this is just looking at property, looking leads from Oak Road. The Area Plan Commission sends this to you with a favorable recommendation. Rezoning the site to our Single Family District will allow the site to continue to be used as a single-family home, which will strengthen and the low-density residential character of the area. Now, if you have any questions?
Other questions from council for area plan? Thank you very much. Petitioner? Petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here in behalf of Eugene and Betty Williams to have their property rezoned from commercial to residential.
I need your address for the record.
Their address of the property is 23990 Fillmore Road.
And your name for the record?
Robin Townsend.
Okay, continue.
That's it. I just wanted to, I'm here to help them get it rezoned from commercial to residential.
Okay, okay.
I'm not there to talk to them.
Any questions from council? Hearing now, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 3017. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on 3017. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
Motion to pass Bill number 3017 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman O'Brien. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 3017 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 3617?
In order to vacate a public way or public place, locate a wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County to it, petitioner Quail Ridge at Knollwood, Homeowners Association, Inc.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 36-17 also has the portion, this portion has come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Okay, I am Bill Castlevire. I'm a resident of Quail Ridge South and I am a member of the Quail Ridge Homeowners Association. I'm here representing our president, Keith LaPierre, who could not be here this evening. We submitted a proposal to vacate what I call Old Fur Road. Old Fur Road area is not used anymore. This happened several years ago when Fur Road was relocated in a northeasterly direction. Formerly, it was a straight north and south road between Brick Road and Adams Road. The change was to come north about a third of a mile and then it angles northeast up to Adams Road and the Fur Road that goes on up into Michigan. So, that's the area. The piece of ground that I call Old Fur Road is a little over 300 feet long and has a 40-foot right-of-way. Right now, there is a retention pond that's partly in the south end of that and there are a couple of utility poles also in that right-of-way. The area is bounded by, the north side is Durham Way East. The east side is a property owned by St. Joe County. The south side is property owned by St. Joe County. And the west side is a common area which our homeowners association owns. So, this area, the Fur Road area, is in between our common property and the property owned by St. Joe County. There are three houses that fall within the 300-foot distance and those people are Schmitz, Walsh, and Potter. The Schmidt property is in contact with the Old Fur Road area about 10 feet. The other two are within the 300 feet. So, the reason we want to vacate this is in our goal to acquire the county property directly east of this and we want to landscape it. We have a proposal from a nursery. We have a well nearby where we can handle the irrigation. It's not going to be a park. We would landscape it, keep it green. We've talked to Harrah Township and they're not interested in any part of it because it's not part of their park's plan. So, that's our situation. Are there any questions you'd like, we'll try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from council? Thanks, sir. Open the public hearing on 3617. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion? Motion to pass Bill number 3617 was made by Councilman Catanzerite and is seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to disclose that I live in this development, although I have no career or financial interest in the matter. I confirmed before the committee meetings, the council's counsel indicated that disclosure is sufficient and I do plan to vote in favor of the matter.
Any further comments? Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 3617 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 3917?
In order to the Sancho County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154 Land Usage of the Sancho County Code by amending section 154 dot 636, definitions by amending the definition of kennel, petitioner, Sancho County Council.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 39-17 comes for full counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission with officers looking down on the level of this building. The text amendment before you this evening addresses the definition of kennel. The problem that we've had in the past with zoning ordinance is the current definition in the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily match the animal control ordinance, even the old one, certainly not the new one, which is recently passed. If you have four or more pets at this point, we consider you a kennel. So, if you have four cats, you're considered a kennel under the current zoning ordinance. With the most recent Sancho County Animal Control update, it was discussed and determined that the best way to handle that is to take that number out and simply look at whether or not the actions are for remuneration, so whether or not someone's getting paid to board or breed their animals in the site. So, the definition removes the reference to the number. This comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. Updating the ordinance to remove the reference to the number of animals served within the definition of kennel will make the zoning ordinance more consistent with acceptable best practices in the recently updated animal control ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Basically, since myself and Councilwoman Hess and Councilman Krasinski are on the famed Animal Control Ordinance Committee, I guess my question to you, Angela, is, or I guess confirmation, if you will, pretty much everyone is okay with that change of the definition of kennel?
Yes, that's been championed for quite some time now.
Okay, okay, so that's, from the council's perspective, I'm, I'm good with that.
There, there was no question or concern about that.
Okay, just, just making sure for the record. Okay, so what's, and, yeah, there you go. Thank you very much, sir. With that said, I'll open the public hearing on the Bill number 3917. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Public Heavens 12032, Terreline Trace, North in Granger. As the owner of three dogs forever, my husband was a dog person and the kids are dog people. I found it really a shock when we took on a dog that belonged to a friend who was going to go join the army services and suddenly we had to pay $50 for a kennel license. We weren't raising dogs, we weren't making any money off those dogs. We were feeding the, the friend's dog. So, this is a wonderful change to make. It seems totally appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on 3917. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number 3917 was made by Councilwoman Hess and is seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 3917 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 4017?
In order to the Sancho County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154 Land Usage of the Sancho County Code by amending section 154 dot 106 C28 to amend development standards for the keeping of horses, other livestock, and poultry in our single-family district.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 40-17 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Angela?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission with officers looking down on the level of this building. There was much discussion in the, flat in the year or year and a half or whatever that the Animal Control Committee was meeting to discuss this, but the discussion on chickens goes back much further than that. We've received many calls over the years about how there's chickens allowed within the city limits, but if you live in a county, suddenly you can't have a chicken. It's resulted in probably a dozen or so variances in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals since the city passed the urban chicken ordinance. There's also been several requests and discussions that have come up about horses and other livestock when you're out in the county as well. During the animal control review process and the amendments of the animal control ordinance, the committee came up with what they thought were appropriate size limitations for the types of animals, so looking more at the type that's being requested and determining the appropriate acreage. When they did that, it conflicts with the zoning ordinance, which requires a minimum of five acres in a residential zone property. So, we need to update the zoning ordinance to match the animal control ordinance. What the zoning ordinance then focuses on is coming up with the appropriate setbacks for the structures and the pens that are associated with the animals that would be being kept in the property. So, what you have before you is a text amendment that removes the minimum requirement of five acres, but then adds in that the building or structure for the shelter of the animal must be at least 20 feet from the nearest residential dwelling, that the outdoor area used for pens shall not be located over a septic field or drainage unit and shall comply with all the required setbacks for an accessory building, that the outdoor area for pens and drawings should be, which is, if it's closer than 20 feet to a side of a real property lot, it has to be screened with type-two landscaping, which is essentially a full screening so you don't see it, that it limits it for non-commercial use only, and that they must meet the animal requirement. This constitutes the Plan Commission's a favorable recommendation and may be had to answer questions.
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. McHale?
Would the chickens be able to not get on Councilman Root's trampoline in his backyard?
The Animal Control Ordinance requires that they be kept within a pen-in area, so the animal control portion that you've already passed kind of regulates how they are kept within property, so they have to be kept in a pen. They're not allowed to just roam free.
Thank God. Thank God.
Thank you.
Now, I can't control the vital turkeys, but the ones that are on people's properties, they're not allowed to roam free.
So, to be clear, the Councilman Root's trampoline was in the chicken pen. It looks like a chicken coop, but it's not a chicken coop.
Chickens bounce.
The number of chickens is established, or the number of livestock is established by the Animal Control Ordinance. Essentially, it's six chickens per half acre for horses or other livestock. You have to have a minimum of one acre in order to have your first animal and then it's a half acre, create additional animals.
And there were some concerns as far as subdivisions, but if you're covenant states that supersede...
Correct. Restrictive covenants within a residential subdivision, the developed subdivisions in the counties, the majority of them have very similar restrictive covenants, most of which prohibit livestock or fowl from being allowed. If that's a provision, that supersedes anything within...
Okay, so this, that is covered.
Correct. There will be a question on, they'll still be required to get a permit from the Animal Control from the Humane Society, and that's one of the questions on the front of that page.
Okay. Mr. Krasinski?
Angela, could you please make sure that the Sheriff's Department gets a copy of that animal ordinance, please?
Sure. Can I draw a line to you, Mr. Krasinski?
Thank you very much. Anything else? Hearing now, we'll open the public hearing on... Hearing that, we'll open the public hearing on forty seventeen. Does anyone wish to address the counsel in favor of this bill?
Public Heavens twelve oh three two, Timberline Trace, North and Granger. We live in a subdivision, approximately a half acre, and over the last twenty-five years, we've raised chickens, ducks, turkeys, pheasants, quail, and some weird things that started making too much noise, so we need to get rid of them. Our covenants didn't say we couldn't. We always checked with all of the neighbors, all the way around, to make sure that it was okay. And one of the animals was able to jump the six-foot fence. We did remove that animal to a farm in Edruthford. That was a turkey. So my, I am definitely in favor of people being able to do this. This is a wonderful experience for our children, plus we got a lot of eggs and peers. And my only concern would be, it sounded like for a minute there, it said that you had to have five acres in order to have those chickens, and I sure don't see the rationale in that, if that was in there.
Oh, no. That's what was changed.
Okay, good. Because, like I say, on our half acre with the privacy fence and the chickens inside, over all those years, we've never had any complaints until the turkey jumped the fence and scared our boy with shortage when she was, and we moved it. So I would definitely turn in favor of that procedure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Or anyone wishes in opposition to the bill? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing on bill forty seventeen. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion to pass.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, bill number forty seventeen, was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kraschinsky. Any further counsel discussion on forty seventeen? Hearing that, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanzeray?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number forty seventeen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, please read the next bill, number three seven seventeen.
Bill establishing a non-reverting fund for the coroner. Petitioner, coroner.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Please state your name and address for the record, so you have time to address the counsel. I'm Mike McGann, San Joseph County coroner, building right next to your office, right next to your ears. This fund is something that probably should have been done a long time ago. We do a lot of calls for deaths that happen to come into San Joseph County from out of county and out of state, Bering, Cass County, and surrounding counties. So it does add up to quite a few calls, and it does add to our toll, which takes away from San Joseph County residents. And with MedFlight coming into the Level Two Trauma Center, we've been there at times when Samaritan and MedFlight have came in at the same time, and we're already there on some, you know, another death. So it does add up, and it's something that nowhere the counties have to deal with because they have no Level Two Trauma Center like we have. So we think adding a four-hundred-dollar cost, which is paid by the coroner of the county from which that person comes to San Joseph County from, to be added on will be a self-sustaining fund for at least some of our equipment that we have, and that we have to use in a time like now with all the car fentanyl and fentanyl and heroin and cocaine combinations that are being used. We've had to double up on all of our equipment, which is costing us more money out of our budget. So this will be self-sustaining, and it will go to the county or township or the MU's office, like in Cass, San Joe County, or Cass and Bering County, Michigan, and then we'll give the bill back to us in the coroner's office. Any questions?
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner?
Mr. President?
Mr. McHale?
How far away would you say that the furthest incident you've had has been thus far?
Thus far, it's been the surrounding outer counties like Cosiasko, Stark County. There have been quite a few. Of course, we get a lot from Bering and Cass. I mean, there's no other Level Two Trauma Center up in that area unless they take them to Bronson and Kellam too. So we get quite a bit, you know, look at all the accidents they've had on twenty. I think they've had ten fatalities here in the last five months. Possibility most of them come here. We have to deal with, and there are days when we're down there, we'll have five or six calls within ten minutes. We'll have five or six deaths in this county for the coroner's office within ten minutes. So it takes all of my deputy coroners at one time to be out and involved, which is taking us away from what really should be done for the citizens that are paying for this San Joe County, for our services. And so far this year, we're up to one hundred and seventy-two calls since January. So quite a few deaths for the coroner's office. And at this point, we could have saved, this year, we could have brought in ten thousand eight hundred dollars so far since January. In 2015, it would have been twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for every out-of-state death or out-of-county death, and in 2016, it would have been twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars to be brought in. So, and it's self-sustaining. Not that we ever want to have another one happen, but if it does, you know, we have to be prepared for what we do also.
We appreciate those, those figures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Hearing that, we'll open a public hearing on forty-seven seventeen. Does anyone wish to address the counsel in favor of this bill?
Mr. President?
Mr. McHale?
I'd just like to applaud the efforts of the coroner and his entire staff. This has been a long time coming. As the coroner said, we're kind of missing the boat. In these economic times, he's going to need more training, more efforts, more equipment. And I'd just like to applaud our county coroner and his entire staff.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing on thirty-seven seventeen. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass, bill number thirty-seven seventeen, was made by Councilman McHale. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Catanzeray?
I too would like to echo Councilman McHale's comments. Appreciate the effort of coroner. It's been innovative in this approach on dealing with out-of-county coroner's cases, which we have seen getting more and more of the trauma center. I still believe in, there's a partnership we can form with Memorial or Beacon Health, the provider, go to trauma center, and see if they can partner with us in some of this. Because it does put a stress on the system, and San Joe County residents really aren't benefiting, other than, and I do acknowledge the benefit of those jobs that are at the trauma center. The services the trauma center provides are phenomenal, but it does put a strain on our system when the out-of-county coroner faces do clog up our system. So, sorry, but I appreciate coroner McGann's efforts and hope we can partner with Memorial Hospital in the future if they want to...
May I add one comment?
Help us out with this.
An average, an average call at Memorial Hospital is three to four hours for each one. If it's a suity case which is admitting death to SIDS, that's five hours. So it does take a lot of time.
Mr. McGann, I want to echo Councilman Catanzeray's comments on the partnership with Beacon, and do you have anything to add about that? Have you thought about that?
It's a little, it's a little rough. You know, we're, I think they're adjusting to us and we're adjusting to them. The protocols were different before from when we came in, so our protocols are a little bit different, but they're by the law. We have incidents where certain things happen that, when you have, and we've dealt with, you know, some of the county police that were down there and the South Bend police and Metro Homicide, when someone dies in the emergency room, they call the coroner. No one by state law is allowed to touch that body until the coroner gets there, because Metro Homicide has to do their photographs and their pictures, but they can't do any cleaning or any, anything to the body itself until we're there. Because we usually just go ahead and do the bagging, tagging, and sealing, and once the seal's on, then it's chain of evidence. The chain of evidence and chain of custody has to stay. So it's a little bit of give and take, because you'll get some new nurses in there, and they'll go in and they'll clean up the deceased. That can't be done. The body's going for autopsy. Nothing can be touched on there. You know, children are another one. You know, we have all family members coming in. There has to be a certain time when, you know, the family members can then make that application, and then they have to turn the body over to us. And we have to do our thing to make sure the chain of evidence and chain of custody stays there. So it's a lot, you know, and then we have to go back and do the reenactment for the children, too. So that's another two hours back at the scene to make the reenactment on whether it's a occult sleeping or a different type of death. Anyone under three years old in the state of Indiana has to be posted, unless two doctors sign off on some congenital defects or something, child was born.
Thank you. Mark, but could you be a little bit, I'm going to put you on the spot, but when you say partnership, and I know we've kind of been on this road before...
I'm referring more to a fiscal partnership between Beacon Health and the county.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Because Beacon attracts these cases here now because of the Level Two Trauma Center, which again, the Level Two Trauma Center is a great thing. It's a much-needed service in our community and in the region.
Sure.
That's my thought, and maybe we can somehow get with you, us...
And I think it's coming that way, Mark. I think it's coming that way. I mean, we have, we've had some unusual situations there. And you have to remember that eighty-five percent of what we do at a home desk or someone that dies within the hospital, when they come through either San Joe or Memorial, do the emergency room and die within twenty-four hours, it's a coroner's case until proven otherwise. So we still have to get the call, we still have to go over the records, and we have to determine if there's a doctor that can sign it or it's going to be a coroner's case. And a lot of time, it happens when somebody falls at home, and they go to the hospital and they go on the line. They've been there six weeks, and the doctor up there wants to sign the death scare. He can't. It's an accident. They can only sign natural deaths. Accidents and the other four that are on there, on the desk duty, are the coroners. Homicide, suicide, accidental, and undetermined. So that, those are cases for us. But going back to that, we have, on our toxicology, which is big nowadays because of all the drugs and everything that's coming in here, we have saved five hundred dollars each time we have not gone to San Joe Hospital, which used to be the previous more. And so far this year, we've saved over ten thousand dollars by not going to the hospital. We do it at our removal services funeral homes. We have six locations at no charge at the coroner's office, that we can go back there, do our toxicology, send it off for submission, and save five hundred dollars every time. And they've also reduced their charge for the removals, and they've also reduced their costs for the transportation up to Western Michigan. So we are saving money. We're trying to find ways to save money, reduce stuff, because we know we're going to need more equipment. So that's how we do it. Any questions? I don't want to be there.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you very much. Hearing no other comments, could we please take the roll?
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Chaloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzeray?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty-seven seventeen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Could we please read the next bill, bill number forty-three seventeen?
Bill forty-three seventeen, bill establishing Cumulative Capital Development Fund.
Mr. Kraschinsky? I'd like to make a motion to send forty-three seventeen back to committee.
There is a motion on the floor. Can we do that, do that at this time?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor to send bill number forty-three seventeen back to committee. Do I hear a second on that motion?
Second.
There's a motion in the second to send bill number forty-three...
I can interject, I think, I believe if you do that, then it will be dead.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so if you send it back to committee, then that's in effect, there's no, like, further discussion.
Or there might be a statutory deadline.
Pardon?
Why would it be dead?
That's our understanding.
That was my question.
Yeah, because the date of when we advertised it, so...
We advertise for a public hearing to be held this evening. We can continue the public hearing to a date, time, and location specific to be recorded in the minutes and to be given to the Department of Local Government Finance, but to send it back to committee is going to postpone it too late to adopt and have it adopted, advertised and adopted and approved by August first. And if it's not done by August first, it's dead.
So we can set a date right now?
Then we would have to re-advertise everything. You can continue the public hearing, which has to be held tonight. You can continue this public hearing to another date, time, and location specific and record it in the minutes.
So the motion would be to continue the public hearing to a...
Correct.
...specified date?
Correct.
Mr. O'Brien?
Perhaps there is sufficient sentiment on the council to send it back to committee to effectively kill it, since there's a motion in the second, and we have that vote, and the payouts, have a different motion.
Yeah, yeah, there's a motion in the second on the floor.
Can you push it to the July meeting?
Well, yeah, but, go ahead.
If it were to go back to committee, to our due committee, our due committee meeting...
Due twenty-second, right.
So you said by August first, it has to be passed, it's going to pass?
It would have to be adopted before August first. We'd have to, we'd have a calendar.
So could it be heard at our July public hearing, to go back to committee, or a special meeting?
That's what Mr. Dutton...
Mike, can you comment on that?
That was my question.
This is, this is, this is our, if they could, then it could work, we'll see.
You could...
Wait a minute. You guys say your name and your address.
Mike Dennis.
July twenty-fifth.
Fifteen twenty-eight Rockmead Drive, South Bend. You have to have paperwork filed with the Department of Local Government Finance by August the first. The deadline is, what the DLGF will, will accept is proof that you have advertised notice to taxpayers of the adoption before August first. So I would say, given that, the last date for adoption would probably be the, no later than the, maybe the second to third week of July.
We have public hearing in July.
But if you don't continue this meeting, the public hearing is sent back to committee that a new public hearing has to be advertised. And that would have to be advertised very soon, because it has to be, it has to be given ten days.
So we could either re-advertise and vote in July, or, as you're saying, continue the public hearing to a specified date? Either or, is that correct?
I'd say, yeah, at this point in time, you probably have time to re-advertise, but you'd have to, you'd have to get notice of paper. You'd have to decide right away and get the notice of paper, because you have to give ten days' notice of the, of the next public hearing.
Well, if the next...
Which I do anyway, for every single thing on the agenda has ten days prior to public hearing. This would be a part of my next advertisement as well.
This is a separate notice that we have to do.
That you have to do?
Right.
Yeah, this is a special notice, a notice to taxpayers that we do for a meeting of that we do for a meeting of this sort. And the meeting is July eleventh.
Next, public hearing is July.
So if we go back to committee on July twenty-seventh.
You mean June.
Or June twenty-seventh. July eleventh would be our adoption. If you want to go back to scratch, you scratch everything and start over.
How many days? Ten days?
Yeah. Re-advertise.
Or continue this public hearing. Until that date.
It sounds like it's possible to. We're under the question on motions. I'd like to know the purpose of the floor.
Thank you.
I feel that I don't, I haven't gotten enough information and had enough discussion in regards to this plan. I must say, all of this.
We are happy to discuss any point in time.
In committee meeting we can.
Yeah. I mean, but you can also stop by my office and I'll give you whatever information you can have. It's been, I mean, you know, so whatever, whatever, some council members have been asking for information. I've been getting it for them, so.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah. Well, I disagree with Mr. Hammond on the propriety of the increase to the levy. I would point out and thank Mr. Hammond for his efforts. He's given me a lot of information and responded very promptly when I emailed and asked him for questions. So that full of information is there for the asking.
Okay. So there's still a motion on the floor, right?
To send it to committee.
And a second.
And motion and a second of sending it back to committee.
That's what I heard.
And that's okay. That works.
Mr. Campbell, I just want to clarify that I'm still a little confused over that. Teresa, it sounded like, again, Teresa, you advertised this separately?
Yes.
You, the honors office did?
Right. She advertises it in bill form on this agenda, but I have to do a separate notice to taxpayers specifically that's provided to the DLGF. We have to provide proof that we've advertised this as a public hearing. And then if this would be adopted, or if and when it's adopted, we have to provide a notice of adoption to the public, or to the DLGF as well.
So you've already done that? You've already notified the DLGF of tonight's public hearing?
No. After the adoption, we would provide notice that it's been advertised for a public hearing, a notice of adoption after the remonstrance period is over. You have to provide a notice of no remonstrance. There's a whole process that has to be done for this type of procedure.
So I guess here's the question that I think Council Katanzerite is asking, based on your knowledge. If, let's say it gets voted out of committee with no recommendation or favorability, comes back for a public hearing on July eleventh. Would it be possible for you to replicate what you did on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, or Thursday, the twenty-ninth?
I would turn right around right now and get the, and get the publications ready to go to be published ten days prior to the July eleventh meeting.
So you have ten? What you're, what, I think, Council.
Right now.
So you, okay. So, okay. Fair enough. You can do this now regardless of what happens.
Right. We may waste some money re-advertising that, but I would get them ready to go because we have to have that notice to taxpayers for this procedure in the paper ten days prior to that public hearing by law.
So there's, there's time. You're not, you're not killing it by sending it back to committee?
Correct. It'll have to be in the paper real close to actual committee time, so I will get it advertised prior to that so we don't miss that deadline. We may be out a little money for that, but we can't miss that deadline just in case we do proceed.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor right now to send it back to committee. Okay. So, please, you're gonna take the role on that?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. McAhill?
No.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Motion carries six to three.
Let the record show that the motion carried six to three to take it back to committee. Next on the business, we need to sustain or override the commission veto on thirty-five seventeen.
In ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Before I ask for a motion, is there any council discussion on thirty-five seventeen?
You're asking for discussion?
Yeah. Okay. Well, here and now, they have a motion over there. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I did want to. So with regard to just push back committee issue with regard to raising the capital fund levy, I personally think that we as a council, that all of county government.
Right. Yeah. We're done with that.
No, no. It's tied into.
Okay. Sorry.
No. So I think that shows that, I think that's endemic of the fact that we are short money. And we're short money in lots of different funds, lots of different areas. And this issue with regard to an additional $50,000, I just, I, I think it's money that shouldn't be spent. I don't think it's necessary. I think that preserving or not expending that $50,000 is a small amount in relationship to the entire budget. I think it's pretty much a standard.
I thought.
Any other comments on thirty-five seventeen?
Just, I'd like to make the comment that I don't think that it was appropriately vetoed. So in order for efficiencies, whatever, I'm going to vote on this, but I don't think it's proper to hear. I think this was, to pick out one piece of that bill, I don't think that's, was done properly. It is what it is.
Mr. Wozniak?
Mr. Triple, would you like to comment on that, please?
I, I don't represent the commissioners, but I think they had it within their right to veto it. That's my opinion, so. I've given you that opinion, so.
You haven't given it to me in writing like you told me you were gonna do it last Friday.
We discussed it on the phone at length, and I really didn't have a lot to add that I didn't. Under home rule, there's nothing in that statute, in my opinion, that prevents the commissioners from vetoing a portion of an appropriations bill, which is what they did. I wouldn't consider that legislating at all. They are prevented from legislating in this county.
Home, home rule does not trump Indiana code.
I agree. Show me, show me the statute that's right on point. There isn't one. It says they can't do that, so.
I have shown, maybe not you, but I have shown Attorney Jamie Woods plenty of information that warrants Mr. Thompson and Nolan's.
I gave you my opinion. We can argue about it all night, but that's fine, so.
Just to be clear, my, I play an attorney on TV occasionally. My opinion is that they've taken part of a bill that you sent out. One piece of it, and they've ruled it not this. Yeah. I don't think they, my opinion, I don't think that's right. It's either this is what it is or this is what it is. They have the right to veto or they have the right to take it apart.
Mr. Nolan, how's that any different from what we do on the appropriation bills?
We're, we've decided to make this a multi-part of our bill. The bill that we send to the commissioners is that one bill.
What you're suggesting is that really, we really should just go back to the old method then. And every appropriation ought to be a standalone vote, a public hearing, so that if there is a part the commissioners want to veto, they have the right to do it. I mean, we did it in the name of efficiency, but if it's gonna cause a problem, let's just go back to the old method.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm saying from the commissioners. I'm not saying from the commissioners, if they want to veto a piece of it, then yes, that would be what they would. I'm not saying that that's what I think.
We should probably go back to the way we used to do it, with every bill a standalone, public hearing, and vote.
We usually have all these department heads here anyway, so why not bring them up and let them talk on it?
I don't think it's appropriate to talk on a veto vote. This is not a public hearing.
He means during the, we all, you talked.
He meant during the public hearing.
During the public hearing, I think.
Yeah. That's what he meant. He meant during the public hearing, because they're already here. The department heads are here, so during the public hearing, if they needed to talk, they could.
Not tonight.
No, not tonight.
Not tonight. Right. If we go back to the old way, Mark.
Yeah. Yeah. They'd have to all show up. They're, they show up now.
They show up anyway.
They do, so maybe we ought to just do that. It takes a lot longer. It could be end of the year, but maybe we ought to do it that way.
I think Raphael and I had a conversation with the field supervisor for State Board of Accounts, and the committee agendas are advertised. Anyone from the public is welcome to come to those meetings and listen to what has to be said. They're also then advertised for the public hearing. They have a right to speak at the public hearing, not at the committee meeting. But Raphael was witness to the fact that Doug Wheezy told us that the, everything that is discussed in committee, there's absolutely no reason to rehear the same information two weeks later at a public hearing that's already been discussed at length in committee, that it can all be on one appropriation bill and passed as one bill.
I think that's true, but if we're causing problems for our other branch of government, then I think we need to reconsider.
But how often does that happen?
Correct.
If even if only happened once, I think we've got to honor that.
So to go back to three, four, five-hour meetings for once or twice a year?
If we're not gonna let them veto basically what's a line item veto, then yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
So for the question for council's counsel, I've attended a number of commissioner meetings there, and I know at least one of the commissioners believes that they cannot line item veto. So it sounds like there's at least some sentiment at official level and some sentiment at council level. Is there, is there any legal reason that we couldn't go back to the old way and have separate?
No. That's a, that's clearly a procedural decision of the council here, so. Because we did it for many years, I sat in this chair and listened to these things.
And not to the good of your advice, but if in fact the correct legal answer is different than your advice, and going back to the old method would be the only way that the commissioners would be able to look at each separate item.
Yeah. I don't, I don't share that opinion, but that's.
I know. I concur with Mr. Ruth. Unless we have unanimous agreement that that's a corporate procedure, I realize that's not an issue before us tonight. I think he's right. I think we need to go back to the old way. Otherwise, you're handcuffing the commissioners.
That's an issue there. I talked about it in committee, but it's not the issue right now.
Okay. Okay. But, but at the same time, I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Nolan, but I think he was just expressing there again, because he does play an attorney on television from time to time, his opinion.
Exactly.
Okay? So operative word being opinion. So if we go ahead and vote tonight to override or sustain, then that's, that's what it is. So. Pardon?
Absolutely. I was not wanting to prevent you into the process. I'm giving you my opinion. I have actually not searched out the judge's opinions that Mr. President has. From what I read and what I know, that is impotent.
And that's your opinion?
It's not for me to make that decision.
Right. So what I'm saying, Mr. Root, that's his opinion. So if we go ahead tonight and either vote to sustain or override, then we're basically not hand, and using your words, not handcuffing the commissioners because they still have the power to veto what we've done. And we have the power to override or sustain.
That's our vote. Yeah. That's our right.
Okay. So that's, that's what I'm saying. There again, I'm trying to stress the point that that was his opinion and that only. So if we vote to sustain.
Who's opinion?
Corey's. So, so if we, if we vote tonight to sustain, override, I will say it again for the record. We are not handcuffing the process.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all in agreement.
And can I just?
So with that said.
Can I just add one more thing then, too? I just, what I would ask, respectfully ask you guys to consider as it relates to this issue is over a, kind of a disagreement, and it's a matter of opinion as to whether the commissioners can do it or not, whether they can pull a piece of legislation out and veto it independently, is it worth going back to the old way? That's all I'm asking. Is, or is it worth doing that? I would rather we did not go back to the old way.
And you know what, Mike? And I'm not really saying that because.
I know you're not.
In the famous words of our, our state representative, Mr. Devine, when he was a councilman, "I'll stay all night because I don't have a life." Okay? So I don't care either way. But what I'm trying to get across now.
Yeah.
Is that I don't, I know what you're saying, Mr., Mr. Root. I don't want to handcuff our other legislative bodies.
No, I understand.
Okay. So far as I'm concerned, we should follow the process, and everybody knows what we need, and not in just this case, but in everything we do. Everyone knows what we need by protocol to sustain or override. Am I correct?
Yeah. Yep.
With that said, let's vote.
Do they have a motion?
Counsel panel.
Go ahead. Yeah.
They have a motion now.
Go ahead.
Well, just a response to what Mr. O'Brien said. You know, I certainly agree, Mr. O'Brien, that these are tough times and trying times. I'm certainly not one that wants to see us have to spend $50,000 toward legal services for something that's not necessary. But based on information that the county auditor has provided to us and based on information we received that there may be some inadequacies in how our current health insurance program has been operated, I think we have fiduciary responsibilities to make sure that we are, you know, and it's probably fiscally healthy to do an audit periodically like this. We have fiduciary responsibility of the taxpayers to do this. So I think it's probably, unfortunately, money, money that has to be spent or it's money that's well-spent just to make sure that we're doing the right thing and our health plan's solid and a total and that things are being handled in a proper manner. That's one reason why I'm considering doing it. I think it's unfortunately necessary.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
In echo, Councilman Katanzerite, if you were, if you were following the health insurance issue, we did, the commissioners did go out for an RFP and we did receive ten RFPs back and the Health Human Resources Committee reduced the bound to four to four with substantial savings right now in regards to the broker fees. So whatever we're going to spend in regards to our broker, we've already made that up, probably times four or five already, whoever that committee or the commissioners go with. So the process is working, or has worked.
Mr. O'Brien?
But that process is the RFP process. We've got that, that savings without spending this $50,000. And I've heard numerous times that there've been some inadequacies identified, and there were some reference to a couple of the potential inadequacies. I guess I'm struggling to understand, if there's been some inadequacies identified, why aren't they publicly disclosed? I don't know, so that they can be addressed without having to spend $50,000. I am aware that the, that there was a very good response to the RFP, and that process is, seems as optimistic as Krasinski's, is indicated, likely to save a significant amount of money, and it's money we're saving without having to spend this $50,000. And $50,000 is, that's the benefits and FICA and PERC and everything, accounting employees' salary, and maybe not every county employee, but that's another county employee's salary that we're saving.
Mr. Morton?
Krasinski?
As you, as you're aware, Jamie, and Mr. Hammond and Mr. Katanzarite wrote, who lived through this, I believe, I don't know what words in their mouth, but this has been like a 16, 17 month process, and we have asked for, numerous times, for information from our executive body, and have not gotten. That's why we have to go to this extreme.
And Mr. President, if I could add, it might be possible, Mr. O'Brien, through this RFP process, we bring these folks in, that a good chunk of the answers that we're looking for could be answered. A lot of things that were asked for through the RFP process, a lot of information still was not forthcoming. And then you have the other issue, too, which I think is prudent to look at, is what, what has happened in the past. So, and I don't know what you do, if you, if, we go and we look in terms of not just what they would want to charge us going forward, what have they done in the past, I think they would be prudent to know that. So I don't think this audit, if it goes forward, is going to cost anywhere near $50,000. I sure would not support that, so it'll be a lot less than that, but I think it would behoove us to move forward with this. And I think, again, hopefully a lot of this, a lot of the answers will shake out during the RFP process. That seemed to be the, Councilman Katanzarite, Mr. Root, you weren't there that day, but you, I know you will be going forward. That's going to be a helpful process, to be honest with you, and should cut down on a lot.
Mr. O'Brien?
I appreciate the auditor's additional information there. It seems to me that if the RFP process is resolving many of these issues, or some of the issues, perhaps the prudent course of action to reduce that $50,000 and not spend that much is to not seek to override, see what is resolved through the RFP process, and then if the sentiment still exists that this is necessary, to then pick it up again, perhaps at $20,000 or $25,000 of cost.
I would suggest you go ahead and appropriate it, you don't have to spend it, just have it there, and then you can choose not to go forward with it. But I would suggest you just move forward with the, with the appropriation, and then you can then always choose not to go forward. You could, these gentlemen could sit there, the three gentlemen could sit at the, at the meeting, I mean, at the, through the RFP process and go, "Okay, we're good." And then that, and that's your call. But I would at least have it in, in order, rather than go through the whole thing again.
I understand your point.
Yeah, I just, it just, yeah.
You have a question from council?
Mr. Krasinski.
Mr. Tullian?
If the override goes through, the county hires Mr. Masters to hire the audit firm, who will Mr. Masters' client be?
I think Mr. Masters should address that.
Mr. Masters? Did you hear the question?
Who is my client?
County coun... Yeah, the county council.
The county council as a whole?
County council as a whole.
Will we, will we be copied on your emails and letters?
If that's what you want.
Please.
I thought the protocol was to correspond directly with the president, but if you tell me something different, then that's what I'll do.
If I'm your client, I'd be interested to see.
Is that, yeah, let's just do that. This is actually a request, Mr. Masters.
To do what?
To basically correspond with, I mean, I know, it's not my call, so, how do we feel about that?
I would like to say I have copies of all the emails and letters.
Well...
Yeah, if I find my client, I'd be delighted.
You know, I really... At work, they'll be subject to a Freedom of Information Act.
Pardon?
If, if, if you won't give them, could you just file a...
No, attorney-client privilege, no.
I, I think you've got a problem, you expect me to give you every email correspondence, because there's going to be attorney-client privilege to a lot of these things. Once I spread them out to the entire council, then they become a public record. So I think you have to be careful with that, you're going to undermine what we're trying to accomplish. I learned something sitting here tonight. The lady that got up on the zoning matter and said, "I don't have a lot to say, I don't talk very much," and she got it approved nine, nothing. I'm going to remember that the next time I come before you. So brevity apparently, apparently works. I'm only concerned because the suggestion is you're going to appropriate the money and then not, not authorize it to be spent. So how much farther along do we get here?
What, what do you mean by that?
Well, your suggestion was that they appropriate the money, but then not, not authorize spending it, so...
They may not, they may not go forward with the audit, I mean, obviously you would be reimbursed, but they may not go forward with the audit, if they, is what I'm saying. That's their choice, that, that's a final decision they have to make after the RFP process.
Somebody's going to have to tell me once you decide what you do.
Yes.
But, but, that's a different, different question than...
Yeah.
What Mr. Tullian had asked, and his question was, who's the client? If the client is the council as a whole...
Yes.
And I'm one of the council members, I'm one of your clients, I would like to have a copy, I'd like to be copied on every letter and every email, and on the emails, it's one of those, like, we apply all.
Okay, but wait a minute, but wait a minute, okay. Now, can we solve this, since you're saying the council as a whole, by taking a vote on that request?
If you choose to, you could certainly do that.
I mean, to me, that sounds like the proper thing to do, because it sounds like, if you're talking about impeding on attorney-client privilege, and, and I respect your request, but, and you're, you're right, we are the council as a whole, but we also vote as nine individuals. So this sounds like one of those things, we would need to vote as nine individuals.
May I ask, Mr. O'Brien, what is it you're asking for email correspondence on?
You send an update about what's going on with the audit?
Oh, that, sure, that, that's not a problem. But I, I thought you were talking about every correspondence that I may happen to do is, in, in an investigation. I mean, clearly, it's going to be privileged information.
Right, and just like if your client happened to be a corporate entity, and there's a president or vice president, the board of directors, they may all get copies of your letters, right?
I would expect that that would be the case.
Okay.
Although I would tell you that I don't do them at midnight.
That's a big, big idea.
Do you tweet?
Well, but yeah, but at the same time, I'm going to say it again, I don't want anyone on this council to come back and say, "Wait a minute, you know, I requested each one, and I'm not getting it, so everything's going to vote." So I need some, I need some clarification.
Well, I, I, when I have, when I have worked for other public bodies, typically the president or the chairman is the one who directs council what to do. And if you ask me to provide a status report, I'm going to send it to you with a copy to everybody else.
But...
But I'm not going to take, I wouldn't expect to receive individual requests from council members for different bits of, pieces of information.
But that's what he just asked for. That's, that's my point, Mr. President. That's exactly what he just asked for, that's why I'm saying we probably need to take a vote, to see if that's necessary, because that's how we do business, we're individuals that make up nine votes. Am I right, Mr. Triple, or not?
Maybe.
Well, can I ask you...
It's, it's really specific, this is more of a specific representation, it's hard to tell you to generalize these things.
Mr. President, do you, are you the only one who corresponds with your council, or do all the individual members, are they free to correspond with your council at any time to ask questions and get legal opinion?
Yeah, they are.
I do quite often.
Yes, oh, definitely, yes, on that, yes. And I'm going to add that Mr. Triple does a great job of responding, in my humble opinion.
My opinion, too.
Mr. Morton?
Thank you.
Mr. Katanzarite?
We did come back to the other board.
Yes, Mr. Masters, we, you were asking him to...
I remember I told you what that nice lady said, you know, she just got up there, but I don't know what she was saying.
That was Robin from the treasures last season.
So, Mr. Morton, I have a question I have for you, is, the status reports you spoke of, would that be satisfactory to all of us, if they were, if there was a frequency that he was able to tell us tonight, we would expect to get a status report on, or how often would we get a status report?
Like I say every time, Mark, I'm one of nine, I don't have a problem with it either way. I'm just, I'm just trying to...
How often do we expect to hear a status report, if we conflict with you, if this passes tonight?
I'm sorry, how, how fast would you expect to hear what?
How often will we hear a status report from you? If you gave a status report to the president and council members as to an update, how often would we expect to get a status report?
If you want me to sense up to weekly saying nothing's happened, I guess I can do that, but I would expect I would send a status report when there's actually something happening that you should know about.
When we were in committee, you expected this to take a matter of months, correct?
It's taken a matter of months to get this far.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, I've been, you know, I've been engaged in, but there's nothing to support it for three months at least.
Right, and the other, well, not, not by our doing.
I, yeah.
The other question was, and then also, you know, besides the expenditure portion of this, us expending $50,000, up to $50,000 to get this done, wasn't there something you presented to us in committee that explained there could be a recovery of some funds if, if something is uncovered in the audit?
Well, isn't that, that seems to be the major thrust of an investigation, is to determine whether there have been, whether there's a recovery available to the county, and also to determine just what the county's been paying for over the years.
And that's part and parcel of it, like, you know, we, that's why I wanted, the RFP process can only, can may reveal, here's what we're proposing to do, we don't know what has gone, you know, on the past.
By the way, if I could just say one thing, you know, you've been throwing around this number of $50,000, and you know that a large part of that, about 80% of that, 75% of that, is budgeted to hire a consultant.
Correct.
It's, it's, that's certainly not engaging me for that, a lot of money.
Of which we cannot hire a consultant, that's why we have to hire legal counsel.
I thought this was about the veto.
All right, thank you for your...
Sure.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, that, Mr. Masters' points is well taken, and that's part of my concern about the undertaking initially, we're hiring an attorney to do something that we, as a body, can't do, as a body, we can't hire a consultant, we're hiring an attorney to do it for us. It's like, I don't want to disclose this, I'm going to get a friend of mine to disclose this, it's just, it's...
Frankly, had the commissioners done this, we wouldn't be here. And there's, there's, and there's enough to be able to, we should be looking at. And I really don't understand why we don't want to look at it, especially when what they're, what they're doing in Porter County, especially with the federal grand jury investigation. I don't understand it, especially with no contracts.
Mike, I don't think it's that we don't want to look at, I think we all agree it's best business practices, but there's some real concerns with how it's gone. If we knew the commissioner's name, he said 17 months ago, then it should have been part of the budget process. No other department is going to come in here and get an appropriation like this above the on like that. We can do it, because we, what does it say there, other department in the government? We wouldn't let them do that, especially when we're in such financial crisis. It just doesn't look good for the county.
All right, Mark, you can calm down. You can calm down.
So it should have been in the budget process last year, if it was looking good.
Well, we didn't, we had the concerns...
And then it would be okay.
Mark, Mark.
Second of all, I agree with both Mr. Masters for once, and Mr. O'Brien, that it's an end around. I mean, that doesn't look good either.
Mark.
You can't, Mike, I'm speaking, please don't interrupt me until I'm finished.
Fair enough.
That's about the most rude thing I think you can do. Thank you. If you want to join the council and debate me, come back, I'd love to have you back. You're very helpful.
Say what you're going to say.
Please don't get snarky. I'm trying to make my point. I think I'm done, I've made it, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
All right, so with, the reason this didn't come out during budget time is because a lot of these issues weren't apparent during budget time, Mark.
Oh, I believe we discussed them last night.
No, 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 not all of them. So that's, that was the idea, and I, my apologies for cutting you off and interrupting you, that was, Root, I apologize for that. That's why we're doing it.
Yeah, I'm sure you can...
I'd really rather not be in, that we were in this spot, period.
Mr. President, get two comments.
Pardon?
Just get two comments.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to record that I think reasonable updates make sense. I am not the one who wants to see every email that you send to everybody. If I need to find that information, I'm thoroughly certain that I can go and get it if I need to see it at some point in the future. And second would be, I'd like to call for the previous question, which is, we're asking for a vote? We're asking for a vote, or a...
Me, me, okay, all right, before we go there, I, I guess I just want some feedback, because there again, I do not want to be put in a position individually, collectively, or otherwise, when we have a councilman asking for each individual correspondent, and you just said you don't want it, that's why I keep saying we need to vote on that also. Is there a problem with that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With that said, do I have a motion on 3517 to sustain or override the commissioners' veto?
I'd make a motion to override.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to override the commissioners' veto was made by Councilman Nolan, seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from council? Hearing tonight, Berkeley, please take the roll.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
No.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. McAhill?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
The record show that bill number 3517 to override the veto was passed on bill six to three. Mr. Triple?
Yes.
Is it proper for us to vote tonight, or do we...
It's, it's not required, I mean, you certainly could if you chose to.
I, I'd like to be on record, because if we have a request, and we have a difference of opinion, Corey said he didn't want it, Mr. Tullian said he did. I want to go on record, in that way, there's no...
Then I think it's appropriate.
New business, a new motion is on.
Would you like to make that motion?
If we, if we were to vote first, I'd be more happy with it.
I'm not asking for a motion or vote, I'm just asking to be copied on emails and letters, which I think is my right as a...
I know it's your right, I know it's your right, but we're still nine individuals that make up this body, and...
The motions.
There, we need to resolve this one way or the other. So if you don't want to make the motion, somebody else make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we get weekly updates from our attorneys, if that update says nothing more than, I have nothing to report, we'll get a, a weekly update, until the sources are...
Do I hear a second on that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Berkeley, please take the roll. I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien?
Right, so that, that's a little bit, the motion's different from what Mr. Tullian's out, asked for, the motion is just simply that we get weekly updates, and that doesn't dispense with a client's right to receive information from their attorney.
But we are the client as a body, and when there's a difference of opinion...
Right, right, but the motion doesn't say anything about, don't send out, don't copy everyone else, it's just asking for weekly updates.
So would you like to add to his motion, to clarify that?
Mr. President, how about this, compromise? If Mr. Masters will copy you on his emails and letters, I would be satisfied with that.
Or every, every email he does?
Yes.
That's typically what attorneys do with their clients, they copy their clients on every letter and email.
Let's just remind you, you're engaging me to do an investigation, I'm going to be corresponding with a consultant, presumably, there may be information exchanged that's privileged, that's not for publication. You want me to copy you on those emails?
If you could, you could mark it confidential, and it could only go through the public...
Excuse me, information, it's probably...
You know what, we have, we have a motion on the floor, don't we?
Privilege stuff can be redacted, and...
Let's vote on that motion.
It happens all the time.
Please take the roll.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
I'm not opposed to receiving monthly updates.
Weekly.
Yes, weekly, weekly updates, and I would vote yes on that, but I still maintain I have the right to be copying on the emails and the letters.
Mr. Triple? Any...
I'd like to discuss it with Mr. Masters, and I, I think there's a motion on the floor, and it's pretty clear what the motion is at this point, so...
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. McAhill?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to two.
The record showed that the motion carried seven to two.
Tullian said yes.
Eight to one, I'm sorry.
Eight to one, I'm sorry.
That's better.
Prove it to the floor. Motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, sorry.
The lady even told me three, two, two, I'm sorry, three years ago. I just wanted to say that all of us out in the county are relying on you folks. You're the only ones that represent all of us rural people. The cities and townspeople all have their council plus you. And for us, it's you and you alone. And we're really counting on you to stand between us and other powers that be in this county that really want the money that the property taxpayers in the rural areas are the only ones that still have left. We're the only ones still under the property tax caps. We haven't hit the caps because frankly, you folks have been pretty reasonable. And that's why you haven't seen a lot of me and some other people in the last few years. You haven't been raising our taxes, you haven't been throwing out programs that we thought were essential or getting, treading on our, treading on our rights and freedoms. So, please don't bring up countywide code enforcement, or all heck's going to break loose. But because you've done such a reasonable job, your budget is actually in fairly good shape, and our taxes are below the caps. Now, South Bend is facing that similar thing, separation thing that they have to do, and yet did the whole smart streets thing, and the tip stuff, the abatement. And their people have hit the maxes, and they've known this for a long, long time. And so, but they haven't changed the way they're handling things budgetarily. So, what did they do? They say, "There's got to be more money." Hey, the rural people still haven't hit their tax caps. But they can't tax us, but they can get you to tax us. And that's where this cumulative economic development thing comes from. If they can get you to hit the whole county with this tax, the only people that'll end up paying it are us rural people because their people have already been taxed to the max. So, the only people that'll end up paying it are us rural folks. And then that cumulative bunch of money, South Bend will say, "Hey, that was for the whole county. You need to give us a big chunk of it." So, see how that works? If they can talk you into hitting us with this tax, the rural people pay the money, and it all goes to whatever, well, a big chunk of it goes to whatever South Bend wanted to do with economic development money. So, we're asking you to be our champions. You're the ones standing between them and us. Please don't vote to get us with another tax when your budget has been proceeding along reasonably and we're comfortable with the level of tax that you currently have us under. Please don't, don't do the bidding of, or play the role of, or whatever it is that South Bend might want you to do here to put more tax money over in their pockets now that they've maxed out their own people. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
I see that Abby has already left, and I wanted to make a comment about how pleased I was to see that the parks were able to meet their threshold for the local requirement in order to get the match. And they now met it, but they exceeded it by nearly an extra $70,000. So, I wanted to thank everyone on the council who helped along that line and also to commend the parks for their, Parks Board for their efforts.
Thank you. Please take your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
I'm covered over by my little $11,400 Madison Road in Madison Township. We're talking about this, I, I read everything that she said a minute ago. I live out in the county, and we're not going to support the city with their problems. And a few years back, we got smugred on wheel tax. Who pays most of the wheel tax? The farmers did. We got cars, trucks, grain trucks, semis, all this stuff. What is, what is they spent that money on? Roundabouts scattered around in the county. We don't need those roundabouts. We need the roads fixed. You fix a road, and then you don't maintain it. You did Pierce Road a few years back, it's starting to go bad. It's already got spots in there that have broken up or a patch. That road should have been slurry sealed three years ago. And I remember when they did Dogwood Road, and not two years ago, it's been 10 years ago. I think it's only been slurry sealed once. And the one section of that is really, really bad. If it, I don't think the county knows that maintenance is, all they know is buy new, buy new, buy new. Maintenance is the most important thing that there is. I lived in Madison Township since I was 10 years old, and I remember when they graded the road together and made blacktop when they did new road. That's how they made the blacktop. Now, they went and shied the road a couple of years ago, ground that all and put it back. It's just about as rough as it was before they tore it up. If you do a road, do it right, or do one mile and not the whole road and do half the job. And I think that maintenance is the most important thing we've got need in this county. If these roads don't get slurry sealed, they're all going to break up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to take advantage of privilege at the floor this evening?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Tanser.
Just to Mr. Holderbaum's comment, Mr. Holderbaum, I think Pierce Road's getting redone right now, isn't it?
Pierce?
Yeah.
Slurry sealed?
I was looking on, I thought I got an email on that.
I don't know. I don't leave the farm that much anymore.
I think Pierce from 331 to...
County 9.
Ash is getting redone right now.
What was that?
Yeah, did you see that, Bobby, come through us?
Yes, I did.
So, it is, it is getting redone.
Okay, that's interesting because a guy drove in my driveway today, and he says we're slurring steel road, and we got a couple loads of gravel and slurry that he wanted to sell to me and put in my driveway. Now, what kind of scam we got going on in here?
Oh, was he an individual, or...
It was a man, a big man, raised 300 pounds, in a white crew cab pickup truck, pulled in there, and he wanted to do my driveway with a deal. And I made a mistake. I should have got his license plate number. But I tried to drive around, and I couldn't find him again. I don't know where he went. There's something going on with the county's travel and slurry. If they're doing Pierce Road right now, he's trying to sell it to me.
I'm not sure about the individual, but if you can, let us know when the person's there or call us. Maybe we can get the county police out there to investigate who this individual is.
If I were to think, I'd have got his license plate, but I'm getting old and slow. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Here now, may I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn? We're here a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you, did you come to visit us, or? Did you have something you want to talk us about, or?
No, I was here for the board to talk about the tax situation.
Oh, okay.
And you, did you get a chance to read our tome that we sent you?
Yeah, your tome?
Yeah, the tome, the big volume.
I get to read all of it, but yeah.
So, basically, I think it'll be okay this year. We're going to be okay this year.
We're going to vote on the tax. It's going to happen.